We have library, Park and Rec, Public Works, and Police Department, and we are live and we are starting right now. So, perfect timing. So, Kira is going to kick off library.
All right. Thank you all. First of all, thank you for letting us go first. Very much appreciated. I know it's a long night ahead. So, yep, my name is Kira Parrott. I'm the Director at Darien Library. In the audience, my colleague Elizabeth Maricola, Deputy Director, and a few of my wonderful trustees and board members. I don't think I need to tell this group the spiel about libraries being so much more than books. I think I gave that spiel last year, but just as a reminder, we are so much more than books and materials, which we certainly have a lot of resources. We really are more like a community sector. We do a lot of free public programming. Last year, we did over 1,000 programs from little baby labs, it's all the way up through book clubs, technology classes, workshops, yoga, cooking, gardening, music, film, et cetera. We continue to be one of the busiest, highest performing libraries in the state, highest circulation for capita. We saw over 160,000 visitors last year, answered about 68,000 reference questions. We do notaries, we do taxes, you name it, it probably happens at the library. I'm going to talk through our budget proposal for fiscal '23, '24. You know, the overall number, we're asking for about $4.4 million. Thank you. Thank you, Kate. $4.4 million is our ask for our annual grant that we receive from the Board of Selectmen. It's an overall dollar increase of about $193,000 over the current fiscal year, or about four and a half percent, a little over four and a half percent. As I told Kate and Monica, that percentage is frankly higher than I wish it would be. You know, and a lot of the drivers of that unfortunately are things that we don't have a lot of control over, and I'll talk about some of those things, but they include healthcare, and they include some rises in things like building supplies and costs and contracts for a lot of the building operational lines that we have. Just as a reminder, the way that we're funded is through this really amazing public-private partnership that we have with the town of Darien, Board of Selectmen, and of course, our taxpayers. About 77% of our total annual operating budget is covered by the annual grant that we receive from this body. And that covers just core, core expenses, and that includes staffing, benefits, and the building operations, just the essential things to sort of keep the physical building and the grounds operating on an annual basis. Everything else that we do, the books and the materials and the programs and the technology and all of the stuff of the library is provided by the Friends of Darien Library. So, this is money that we fundraise every year through our events, through our annual campaign. We also move a little bit over from our endowment, help support our Friends' operations, and so that's sort of where our major sources of funding come from every year. So, if you go through, I'll go through them in more detail, but on the next page, you can sort of see those major budget categories. Staffing being the largest one, followed by benefits, and then our building operations, and we have a few slightly smaller lines, library support and risk management. So, to start at the top of that, the biggest bucket, of course, in our budget and really any budget, is salaries. Our staffing, our salaries for our full-time employees and our hourly wages, it's about 65% of our overall town budget. And same as we did last year, we are coming to ask for a 3% merit increase for our staff. Last year, and there's information in the appendix on this, we had done that compensation analysis and benchmarking exercises where we looked at the Connecticut Library Association's benchmark for all the different library positions, and then we also used some very hyper-local data, as much as we can find, for our peer libraries down here in Lower Field, Fairfield County. So, looking at Greenwich, and Stanford, and Westport, and New Canaan, et cetera, et cetera, to look at as much as we could apples-to-apples, both starting librarian salaries as well as where people are a few years out. So, looking at that four, five, six-year trajectory and saying, okay, even where Darien Librarians maybe start, you know, at a comparable position, where are they a few years out? And that's sort of where we lose our competitive edge. Because unfortunately, a lot of our peer libraries are members of unions, they have collective bargaining agreements, they have salary steps and other mechanisms to sort of bring their salary up over time. We don't. Our budget never has steps or any sort of increases other than the annual one. And so, what I had sort of articulated and argued last year, same thing, if we can sustain a 3% increase for the next five fiscal years, we should be in a much better position. We're not going to outdo these peer libraries. We're not going to, you know, get beyond them, but we just don't want to fall too far behind because that's when we lose our people. We lose some of our great talent. So, it's not a guaranteed 3%, it's the opportunity to get up to 3%. And it is, the actual specific individual merit increase is determined after the results of the performance evaluation. And it's a pretty rigorous, multi-part performance evaluation. Actually, we just completed part one, which is the mid-year review, and then it's followed by an annual review. Our staffers are evaluated against a matrix of criteria, including core competencies that everyone is expected to perform against, as well as specific position and strategic goals for the year. So, the majority of the increase is that 3%, but you will see on that staffing line, it's 3.23. And that extra, that 0.23 is coming from not any full-time headcount. Our number of full-time employees has remained flat since at least 2016. Our full-time employees have pretty much stayed status quo for a long time, but we have increased our part-time hours slightly. And this year, we were asking for a slight increase on part-time hours, the vast bulk of which are in the youth services line, specifically tween and teen services. So, you might know if you've visited a library that there is a teen space on the lower level, there's the teen collection down there, and now we have opened up what used to be the tech lab, the power library, to be an extra study space for them. And we are seeing a huge uptick in foot traffic in general to the library, but specifically teenagers. If you go to the library now, any evening after school, there are teens all over the building, which is great, and we love to see it. And we love to keep that lower level open and available for them, for that extra study space, and to provide homework help and other services for them, but we need an adult, a staff member down there to staff it. So, if we could, you know, this additional hours essentially would double the after-school and weekend hours and services we can provide to them. So, that's where that little extra is coming from. Our part-time employees do not, are not eligible for benefits, so that increase has no bearing on the benefits budget. One other note about salaries, you know, I said this last year too, the vast majority of our salaries are in this budget, in the town grant, but we do allocate every year a little bit of our, the fundraising money, the Friends' budget, to cover both salaries and any benefits associated with the staff who are performing any sort of fundraising or Friends' support or direct board support, and, you know, we allocate that annually as part of the Friends' operating budget development, and we anticipate that the increases that we are seeing on the town side will be reflected and comparable on our Friends' budget this year, which we will begin developing in just a couple months. So, let me pause there on the staffing because I talked at you for a while on staffing. So, if you have any questions.
What percentage attain the 3%?
Oh, you know, I'd have to get back to you on specific percentages. I think that probably something like 80 to 85% of our employees do wind up getting, you know, the full 3%. You know, we have, it's a good problem to have, but we have an incredibly high-performing staff who are by and large knocking it out of the park. So, most of our people are doing well, but, you know, every year is a little different and the goals do change and shift. We ask a lot of our people.
And Kira, you said, you said five years for that, so does that include last year?
Yes. So, this would be year two of that sort of five-year initiative to try to keep it at that level. All right. So, on the, the next big, the big chunk of our budget is in benefits. And as I mentioned, healthcare is really, is really kicking us this year. We're expected to see an increase of 12%. And while I understand that that's sort of what a lot of people are seeing and sort of a national average, for us, it was still, you know, a pretty shocking number. And I am working with, we are part of the CT State Partnership Plan. We're in a different plan than the town. There's a possibility it might come a little bit under, it might be closer to 11 or maybe even 10. We should have the final number soon, so it's possible that could come down a little bit, but it's still quite a bit. You know, last year, I think our increase was 4%. So, to go from 4 to 12 was pretty shocking. I did have a conversation with Kate about, you know, whether or not we should be thinking about going to market, and it was determined, you know, not at this time, you know, that's a lot, but it, I guess, could be worse. The other thing that is driving up our healthcare budget is we have seen more families come in. So, we had a couple different, you know, people depart the library or retire, and when those positions got filled by new employees, you know, they had been budgeted as singles or they were on a single plan, and lo and behold, they came in as families. So, we've gone back and forth over the years about how to budget for open positions. Do we budget as a single? Do we budget as a family? We've done it different ways. Of course, the moment we started budgeting for singles, after seeing a trend of singles, now they're all coming in as families. So, that is also slightly driving that increase there. Dental, we are part of the town plan on the dental side, as far as I am aware. That's supposed to be pretty flat, so we're good on that end. And we are very fortunate and grateful to be part of the town retirement plan, and that number is part of the budget. I received that directly from Jen, subject to approval, I think final approval by the pension committee, but that is baked into this number here. Like I did last year, I just gave a quick analysis, looking at the most recently updated numbers in terms of benefits paid per full-time employee, sort of comparing us to other local libraries. We're not the highest, we're not the lowest. I think we're sort of, you know, in a, in an equitable place there. Any other questions on benefits? Those are the main, the main drivers there.
Within that driver, and when I was looking at the statistics, we are about in the middle, but there's like a $10,000 difference per employee between us and Westport. Within that, what's the driver that makes our, you know, benefits per employee so much greater?
I'd have, I'd probably have to look a little bit more into like what, what the Westport is doing. I mean, it's, it's very possible that it, part of that, I know when they have unions, there's some monies that get like shifted out. I know I didn't include Greenwich here because the benefits are paid from a different entity, and so they have a very low number. It's like 5,000 or something, but we know that's not actually, that's sort of the number that their municipality is putting towards it as opposed to maybe a different entity. So, I think I would need to probably talk to the Westport Director if they're willing to sort of share that information. It could also be a function of the town retirement, and that's a very nice benefit that not everyone has a pension plan.
I believe that Westport has a 401, a defined contribution plan for all their, you know, maybe half and half, they, because, but they started doing that like at least a decade ago. There could also be differences in terms of what the employer pays for things like medical insurance versus what the employee pays.
Gotcha.
Right. So, that, oh, the risk management, I think I didn't actually include the little snapshot. It is on the larger spreadsheet. That is also, the liability insurance and property insurance is also something that is, we are covered through the town, so that's also a number that I get from Jen and bake into that, that line. And moving on to building operations, this is about 10% of our overall budget, and these are things like all the service contracts for the elevators and the fire alarm system and, you know, things like our landscaping, the garbage and recycling service, tree service, pest management, you know, and all of these things essentially are going up. Some of it's supply costs, some of it's just, you know, these, these vendors and contractors, their costs are going up and it's trickling down to us. They have to pay their people more, they have to spend more on their own supplies and fuel and whatnot. So, all of that is sort of having that trickle-down effect of increasing our, our budget lines. Utilities, certainly, we've baked in. We did, you know, as the town did, have, you know, the, make sure we had the lowest possible rate we could with, with the supplier, but it's still going up unfortunately on the electric side. So, we're looking at an eight, almost an 8.5 increase overall in our building operations. I will note however, that this is, I think, the first time in about five fiscal years that we've had an increase in this line. We've been very lucky and fortunate in that the last few fiscal years have either been flat or even slightly down, which has been great, but I guess we were a little overdue for, you know, some of these things coming, coming up.
Kira, didn't you defer a few things last year?
We also did defer a couple different things, like tree service, certain repairs. And then there were certain things that we weren't as busy. We were still coming out of the COVID slump a little bit, and we thought, we can put that off a little bit longer. We don't have to clean that or repair that just yet. Let's give it another year, but now we're very busy again, and, you know, we do, we do need these services. Let's see. And then moving on to library support, you'll see that with the exception of cataloging and processing, which I'll talk about in a minute, we're flat. I mean, these are very small dollar amounts, minimal postage and printing and things that we do. Most of that sort of marketing and publicity budget sits on the Friends' side for any sort of promotion of library events. The Friends take care of that. This is like the printing of library cards, you know, very, very essential, basic things. Cataloging and processing is up slightly, mainly because their, our supplier, their, their supplies are, you know, costs are going up. But as a reminder, I think we talked about this last year, like what is cataloging and processing and why is it in the town budget? You know, so cataloging is both the creation of the catalog records and the metadata and bibliographic data, Dewey Decimal and all of that, that has to, you know, be created for every item the library circulates on our online catalog, as well as the physical processing. So, every item we circulate needs to be processed with the Mylar and the labels and the barcode and RFID tags and all of that. And about over 10 years ago, the decision was made to outsource, like 95% of this work that used to happen in the library, it took a team of people, librarians, catalogers to do, now that is outsourced, a lot more cost-effective to outsource that work instead. But their costs are going up slightly, and we are ordering, you know, more stuff because again, we're busier than we were over the past two years. And as you may know, this is a voracious reading community and a sophisticated one that comes in. You know, they read the book review every Sunday, and they come in wanting the bestsellers, and we want to provide them. So, we are, you know, stepping up our ordering as well, which means processing fees. But that, otherwise, that's pretty status quo. The rest of the presentation is essentially just a little history, a little context. I showed you the last five years or so of the approved budget from the town, the town grant, and what those increases were. I also looked at the Friends' budget and what the, what the Friends' budget contribution is. And as I mentioned last year, you know, 75, 75 to 77% of our total annual operating budget is provided by the town, and we are incredibly grateful for it. To give a little context, most public libraries in the state of Connecticut and nationally have a much higher municipal percentage, anywhere from 85 to 100%, depending on the town or city. We also have a very robust Friends' budget and group. The fact that they are able to provide that 23%, the fact that we are able to have the percentage of our, our endowment coming to support that annual budget at a fairly high percentage is also unusual and very fortunate. So, that partnership between the Friends and the town is very highly effective and sort of unique. The other thing I showed was some of the other stuff the Friends of the library do, which is namely the capital project, so some $2.3 million over the last few years and counting. We just replaced a bunch of air handling units for HVAC, we did some carpeting, we had to do some technology upgrades for our network switches, and we have a lot of facilities projects sort of planned out over the next few years and things that we, we know we're going to need to do and that we will be working with our Friends and our Board to figure out, you know, how we're going to cover those expenses. We, you know, we build that into that fundraising arm. And finally, just some information in the back, I have some of that compensation analysis data. And one thing that's new this year, if you have, if you have time to look at it, I mean, it might be a little silly, but I thought it was kind of interesting, this return on investment analysis on page 15. So, this is something that the Maine State Library developed. It's something called the Library Value Calculator. And I think when most of us talk about the value that a library brings, we're more talking about the ephemeral, you can get, they're hard to quantify. It's the relationships that are built, it's that sense of community, it's lifelong literacy, it's all of these great things. But for those of you who want to think more in numbers, you know, what does that look like? That's a different kind of value. And so, what this calculator does is it has a market value for all the things that the library, you know, does. So, your average hardcover book, paperback book, the price of a movie ticket, the price of, you know, taking a workshop on X, Y, or Z. And you plug in your usage, how many books were circulated, how many films did you show, how many, you know, all of these different things, and it shows you the market value. And last year, our market value for all the things that we did, the programs we hosted, the books we circulated, was over $11 million. So, you look at that sort of, the investment of, you know, 4. something million dollars versus, you know, that return on investment is 189%, which I'm not a finance person, but I understand that's a very good ROI. So, I thought that was fine to sort of point out there. And I'm happy to answer questions about any of the above.
Kira, what percentage of the library visitors are from Darien?
Over 75%. We have about a quarter, sometimes it's 20 to 25% of our, of our users are non-residents, primarily Stanford and Norwalk residents. And we know this through the light, the number, the percentage of library cards that are registered, as well as our circulation, and sometimes some other program attendants. One thing we did talk about, actually Kate and I were discussing a couple months ago, was non-resident usage and making sure that, that we are being fair and equitable to the taxpayers of Darien in terms of the special privileges that are for residents only. So, there are, you know, things that only residents get, that if you are a non-resident, you don't, you don't have the ability to access any of our e-digital collections. There are certain, you know, reservations that you cannot make in advance, only Darien residents have the privilege to do that. However, we have for a long time had a Friends' level, so if you donate to the library at X level, you will get those privileges. And we have talked about making sure that that level is at or above what your average taxpayer is paying toward the library grant every year. So, we're going to do that analysis, and that'll also be part of our Friends' budget development as I work with the Board to make sure that we are reflecting that fairly.
And then, your budget was passed, right? You just passed?
Our Friends' budget for the current year, we don't develop the fiscal '23, '24 until about April.
Until April?
Yeah.
Good. Any other questions for Kira?
In prior presentations, there's been more detail about sort of Friends versus town operating budget, which has sparked a lot of conversation in the past. So, for example, just taking a look at the various components in some detail, comparing those components to what the town grant pays for, and then specifically, specifically looking at allocations of costs that the town incurs, and then there's an allocation of that to the Friends, kind of based on sort of whether this is a Friend-covered cost or not, and just kind of taking a look at that. Sometimes it's helpful not just to see that, but to see what changes might have been made if there's been a reallocation between town and, and the library, or the Friends of the library, just so that there's kind of transparency in terms of how those two mesh up together over time, so we can see if there's any change in those.
Sure, sure, yeah. I'm happy to provide more detail.
Alan had a, he had some analyses like that in the past, and I could probably dig some of that stuff and send it to you if you don't have it.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I should, I should have the past budgets. Are you thinking particularly on the Friends' salaries and benefits side?
Mainly kind of cost allocations from what the town pays for to what the library pays for, whether there's any sort of change either in level or trend or methodology, that sort of thing.
Okay.
If you take a look or drop me a note, and I can, I can share with, share with you what I've had before.
Sure, yeah, I'll see. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, we do try to keep, you know, those sort of, those buckets pretty, pretty distinct. So, you know, the staffing, the benefits, and the core operations, and really limiting to that and everything else, you know, whether it's publicity and marketing, you know, all the events that we do, you know, speaker fees, you know, any of that wholly sits on the Friends' side. The only time really that there's sort of, you know, a little bit of, of the lines being crossed is salaries and benefits, and that's really at that individual level. We look at every employee and we say, okay, are they 100% doing fundraising, then they're 100% in the Friends' budget. Do they spend about half their time working on Friends and development, then 50% of their budget sits. So, I'm happy to.
That's good. We'll just take a look at that.
Yeah.
Thanks. I was just.
Also, just curious, when you do your annual reviews with all of your employees, do you provide complete compensation package so that they know how much their benefit package costs?
We do.
Okay. Just because you mentioned that you do family coverage, so somebody who's a family who's coming in is obviously being compensated much higher than someone who's coming in as a single, and I want to make sure for retention purposes, they do know that.
Yes, they get a letter.
Right.
Right. Has their salary plus all the benefits, you have a dollar amount of that value. Yeah, I think that, that can have a huge impact.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. You're good, Kate?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience have a question? Jeff?
I have a couple. What percentage of healthcare do your employees pay?
Listen, if you don't know that off the top of your head, do the percentage.
If you don't have any today.
10%. It is 10%. Yeah.
10%? You pay for 10%? The employee pays for 90%? Is it?
No.
The opposite.
Regardless if they're a family package or a individual package?
That's typical.
That's typical. Okay.
At least in government.
To follow up on Jaycee's question, I do have a question on the allocation of staff salaries to the Friend. Who are they? What dollars and what percentage are you using? And if you could just provide a list, I don't need email. The other thing that was asked at the Board of Ed, and so we're asking sort of everyone, and I know that the library is very innovative, has a lot of efficiencies, but looking at this budget, what efficiencies can you look at that might affect the budget that you just presented? I mean, just take another look at that. And lastly, and this is only because Open Gov and I are not getting along this show, can you send me a copy of the presentation?
Yes.
Because I can't access Open Gov.
Yes, absolutely.
I don't think this is.
It's not in Open Gov.
I emailed.
Sorry.
Well, just, yeah. Open for Darien, whatever. Open for Darien.
Is it possible to get this next year, maybe a little earlier than the day before? Maybe unfortunately I have a chance to look at it.
Sure, no, absolutely, yes.
Okay. So, like I said, what we're going to do is we're going to collect, this is, this won't be a question-and-answer thing, but what we do is we'll collect your questions and your concerns, so you can voice them now, and we'll take notes, or you can always drop us a note too. Okay?
Thanks, Kira. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. The next budget, actually, why don't we give the library people a moment to get out?
Thank you for joining us.
Good night.
Good night, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. So, the next budget we have to discuss is Parks and Recreation. And just high level, one thing to note, that they had requested to consolidate four part-time positions into one full-time position. I did not put it forward. I felt that the four current part-time or contracted roles did not fit well combined into one full-time job, different skill sets, et cetera. I was also reluctant to create another full-time job with all the things that come with it in terms of benefits. So, I eliminated the full-time and restored the funding for the various part-time lines.
At the same level, Kate?
At the same level, yeah. So, and Parks and Rec started some initiatives last year, such as trying to remove invasors and stuff, and I really do want to support them. I wasn't always, didn't feel able to support them at the level of increase or the rate of increase that they were requesting all the time, but they are in there, and I'm hoping that you'll support them. So, I'm going to start, and just bear with me a little, since I don't have Jen to run the computer tonight, I'm going to start in the admin. And let's see. We have the whole managing the columns thing here, right? So, for the most part, the admin budget is basically status quo. There are some increases. There's no change in headcount here. There is some additional cost in mileage reimbursement for its minor $200 for staff below the director level, for having to go out to the parks and the beaches. They only have one vehicle assigned to the administrative staff. The clerical budget is up a bit. It's due to the number of meetings they're having and the complexity. I tried to talk Pam into minutes like the style of Board of Selectmen, and she says Parks and Rec likes their minutes with a lot more detail, so.
I like their minutes. I think their minutes are terrific.
But that's all their, that's all I had in the admin section of the budget. Like I said, it's, there's not a lot of change there. Next up would be beaches. So, printing is something you're going to see up across the board here. Cost of printing has gone up in many places. Seasonal employees, that's the lifeguards. We were losing lifeguards to Stanford last year, so they are attempting to try and retain them by increasing the rate of pay. There is an incentive there, and you see at the end where I restored the waterfront coordinator. But that is a problem, it wasn't unique to Darien last year. There are other communities that had the same problem. And let's see, what else do we have? The facility maintenance materials. Facility maintenance materials is up a bit. Again, it was one of those ones where I thought the rate of increase was higher than we could sustain, so I did reduce it a little bit, but this deals with buoy replacements, replacing signage, swim line repairs, a lot of equipment down at the beaches. So while it is up significantly, not as high as had been originally requested. From there, I'm going to go to recreation facilities. You'll see overtime is up here, that's based on overtime, based on historical spending, and you see the full-time salaries, that's not a change in headcount, it's change in personnel. So people retiring, new people coming in at lower levels. Clothing and tool allowance, that's contractual. And then we do have a decrease, slight decrease in operating supplies that we, that was their budget, not my doing. Otherwise, a pretty much status quo budget. Go to organized recreation and events. So again, in this one, you're going to see printing and mailing up. More brochures and brochures, yeah, brochures and the cost of printing is up. Here's the big one that I want to highlight here, program expenses. This is for the town to take on the cost of the fireworks show around the Fourth of July. So that would be something that we have incurred the cost, the primary cost for in a number of years. But in recent years, it's been done through fundraising by local businesspeople, and they're no longer able to do it, and we have taken it over.
So Kate, that, so we're making up the, the difference of eighteen this year, but next year we should plan on?
It should be more.
Like forty thousand extra?
Yeah. Pam's nodding yes.
But I'm hopeful that Pam and her team will continue to do outreach to our community in the hopes that we will have support.
Always.
Thanks.
Operating supplies, up again, this, it was up, the request was higher, I reduced it, just feeling, you know, there's a certain level of increase that, you know, we just couldn't support, but this is publicity, program t-shirts, parks, sporting supplies, including pickleball nets. Very popular program, so.
What are you laughing at?
Oh, bless.
It's all you, isn't it?
Yeah.
He's out there every day. I'm glad you're using them.
And then moving on to grounds. So you're going to see increases in a couple of different places when the thing comes up. Pest control. The increase here is to add geese control at Highland Farms, and I did ask Pam if the hunt club or the hunting record club was okay with it, they are. So we will be attempting to manage the geese at Highland Farms with the dogs.
The dogs.
Okay, we're paying the same with, with that company as we are for, for Tilly, right?
No, Tilly is twenty, Tilly and Town Hall is twenty.
Okay.
So all total three, three locations, so I'm not sure.
All total, we're spending thirty thousand on geese meat?
On dogs.
On dogs.
On dogs, get rid of geese. It's just a never-ending problem, and I think it's one of the bigger complaints. I mean, we do have factions who don't want us to scare the geese away.
Right.
But I think.
Particularly about a Tilly.
Yeah, it really is.
Yeah.
It really, really is.
And we do get complaints about it at Highland, too.
Do the dogs, are they year-round, Pam? They're, they're year-round, right?
I've been able to negotiate with the companies to, you know, less running during the winter when there's less people out there.
Right.
So we've negotiated a little bit to get the cost down, but it's like, we're paying twenty thousand dollars a year quite a long time.
We did try to not.
I know.
Have it, and it just didn't work.
I know, because I got the phone calls. People were.
Plus, if you're a dog, it's got to be the best job in the world.
Yeah.
Trying to do more tree maintenance, just being, trying to be proactive, and it's, it's another one of the highest, you know, complaints we get from people is about the trees, so trying to do something, you know, increase that level. Facility repair, again, trying to do more work to remove the invasives in the various parks, which, you know, I think is a great initiative on their part. Here you see the telephone audit going through. And then the, the gas, just propane, the rates are heating fuel for the, that's for the paddle ports, just the rates are going up, the cost increased tremendously.
Okay, going back to the invasives.
Yeah.
I lost the screen, is that?
Sorry.
Staying the same?
Well, it's a part of an overall budget. The increase was up significantly, so, you know, I made an adjustment to bring that down, you know, it's still up six percent.
It is, okay.
You know, I made an adjustment to bring it down to a, a level of increase I felt was a little bit more palatable. Where they go with that, within that budget, is really up to them.
Okay. But it's six percent?
A six percent increase in the budget, yeah.
Is that to maintain not having any more invasives come in, or we still have a ton of invasives and we need to?
They're trying to get them out.
And the first few times was not, didn't work?
I don't believe we're at, at the point of maintenance yet. No, we're still removing.
But we will have to maintain.
We will, yeah.
In addition to the.
Yeah, I don't think this is a thing that will ever really go away.
And there's some bad ones at Cherryland.
There's bad ones all over town.
Yeah, yeah.
That was what I had on operating, that's my overview on operating. So is there anything specific you wanted to go back to on operating? Yep.
Where are we putting the Great Island expense?
Pardon?
Where are we putting Great Island?
We have a, a special fund established for Great Island, we probably did that last year. When we complete the purchase, we would be able to take the income from the rental properties on.
We haven't forecast any kind of operating expenses for next year for that?
For them? No. You know, I feel like it's a little early, because we don't know how we would be using the property, and the revenue that would come in is sufficient to manage the, to cover the expenses that we have seen from the current owners, that are needed to maintain the property as is. It's, it's more than we would need to maintain it as is, right? But then we have to determine, what are we doing? You know? And until we have, you know, what we're going to do beyond just keeping it as is, it's too early to put together a budget, in my opinion.
Concerned about having zero in the budget, if we take ownership of this before this next budget year.
I think, Sarah, you're missing that, there is a budget, there is a special revenue fund up, it doesn't have to be in the budget.
I understand that, but we're not, we haven't forecast any.
But we already, we already established the special revenue.
Kate, I hear what you're saying, and what I'm saying is, we should probably think about, because it will be in this next fiscal year.
I think, you know, Sarah, I, I think that the discussions will start in the next fiscal year, but if, will the work start? That remains to be seen, and will the surplus that we're, we will be generating cover the initial beginning of the, whatever we do? I think it will, so.
Do we have an idea of what some expenses, based on some information we found during the inspections or such that we know we have to do? Do we have certain projects that we need to complete kind of right away, do we know?
I think it's premature for that discussion right here, yeah. Absolutely.
But ultimately, would, would it even be in Parks and Recreation? If the, is that, would that be the budget home, naturally for Great Island, or would we create a whole different enterprise for that?
Honestly, I think it's even, I'm reluctant to give you a definitive answer on that, right? We have special revenue fund set up where the revenues that we would be generating through the rental properties would cover the current operating expenses. It's possible that we would continue to be able to generate sufficient revenue to cover operating expenses there, but it's hard to say without knowing what those operating expenses might be. And, you know, what, you know, what if we put some Park and Rec programs out there that would generate revenue? Do we run them through the Park and Rec permanent fund, or do we keep Great Island as its own separate entity all the time? I think there's a lot of questions that need to be answered before we, and before we can say definitively how we're going to do that.
Well, that makes sense, you know, I just, whatever the, the future is of that, a purchase in that property, however we administer it, or however we allocate funds for that, I think we want to make sure that that's a, a process that has.
Transparency.
Heavy transparency and community input, because it will occur, or those needs will start to occur before the next budget cycle.
Right.
And so I, I don't think we can say, oh, well, here are startup costs, and they're more than we thought, and this is what we're going to do, without that being a, a full,
Absolutely.
You know, conversation. I think that's, you know, the, the expectation of our citizenry, and I think that's, you know, what we're all concerned about, and I think that's what, you know, Sarah's speaking to as well.
But I don't feel, I'd be kidding you if I could sit here and say to you, oh, well, you know, we're going to need two hundred thousand dollars next year for management of programs, I've got no idea.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, is there anything else we wanted to talk about on operating? If not, I will shift on over.
Capital.
To capital. Actually, no, I'm sorry. I do this all the time. Revenues. So biggest, in this budget, the biggest revenue we have is the parking permits for the beach. And then we have paddle port rentals, looking for an increase there, looking for an increase in boating permits, and the building permit, building rentals. We also.
Are we raising any of those rates? Is that why there's a predicted rise of twenty-five percent for the boating permits, or no?
I'd have to ask Pam that.
No, it's more.
More boaters?
It's more kayaks.
Oh.
So my question is, can we build even more?
Kayak spots.
Right.
Now, the property that we have now, if we move ahead with the project and expand the.
Peachtree?
We'd like to see Pam have more kayak flats. But we're adding one this year.
Okay.
We've already built it.
Okay.
That would be additional.
How many kayaks go on one?
There's fifteen slots.
And then on the building rent, I see, I see a bump there, and I see, we have scheduled thirteen thousand, but we've only received so far twenty-two hundred. Is, that's not?
It's the seasonal.
That's, that's not the paddle hut.
No, the paddle hut, but that season hasn't really started, it's a winter sport.
Right.
You know?
It's winter. Yeah, people are out there.
Yeah, they are, but you wouldn't expect.
Right now hitting balls.
You would not have expected to see the revenue, you know, until the beginning of the year.
Right. But I think Pam does rent that hut out, though, for a few other things, too.
Right, but the biggest, the biggest revenue is going to come in the spring, or, I'm sorry, in the winter.
Right.
All right. There are also revenues, grounds, fields, and buildings, not sure where that is. Parks facility permits, looking for some increase there, tennis court revenue dropping off a little bit.
What do we, how do we get tennis court revenue?
We rent the tennis courts.
For?
Box of time, so somebody could rent out, you could rent out the court for the whole season, if you wanted to.
Oh, okay. All right, it's just regu-, oh, I thought it was like the, you know, like the paddle hut, like you could rent the courts for a party or something, okay, I didn't understand it, okay.
Like pros will rent it to give lessons and stuff, is that?
No, it's sort of residents will rent, both the Weed Beach and Cherryland.
For the season.
So like a season before, like, come on to play every Tuesday at six o'clock for the spring and summer, and we'd rent it out, too.
So is the fall off because people are going to pickleball?
I think that probably has something to do with it, for sure. I don't think the, the demand definitely is, for tennis, isn't as much as it is for pickleball.
Pickleball, wow.
Okay. Do you have any more new pickleball courts?
I'd make you charge more for pickleball then.
Well, do we need more pickleball courts? I mean, is that a?
The other place we have revenue is organized community events, and you have the big community events that Park and Rec sponsors rent at Town Hall, and then the programs, this is the net revenue that comes over from the programs. If you remember, the whole big thing we did the last couple of years where we have put it into its own fund, this is the net revenue that comes back to the, to the general fund from those. All right, now I'll go over to capital, and there's a lot of it. So, one of the things I said to you last night, any projects that were over a million dollars, I believe should stand on their own, so I removed them from the capital budget. Let's see if I can make this a little digger. So. Pam, can I mention the Weed Beach gift possibility? Okay. So, one of the requests in this budget was for, to put together, the cost to put together the bid package to put the Weed Beach Meadow Project out to bid, and that cost was twenty-five thousand dollars. The Darien Foundation is generously offering a gift to cover that cost. So if that can come out of the budget, you might want to consider putting back in something else that I cut. So just want to throw that up there.
What choice did you get?
It was twenty-five. You might want to take the savings, but. One of the bigger projects here is renovate the cement patio. Let me see if I do this right.
At Weed?
At McJuan. What I tried to do in going through these, I tried to go for things that were safety-oriented or would provide us savings either through not having to be repairing these old equipment or making us more efficient, so. So this cement patio at McJuan, I felt that this was a safety issue and that it really needed to be supported. The tree roots are lifting the patio, causing things to be uneven and actually causing stress on the foundation as well. So I think this is something we need to do. It's a big enough.
Do we have an estimate for that?
250,000.
But is that, that's the estimate we got?
Yeah.
Given, okay.
Kate, is there any possibility the Little League would want to participate in restoration or are they?
I think we can, we could certainly approach them.
Kate, one, one last thing on this. Is this, is this the entire patio?
I believe so, yes. Okay. We have an irrigation valve at Hollihan, which is actually out here. The issue here is it is, needs to be replaced. Breaking down is needing to be repaired with the leaks. Repairing it would save us water, so it's saving us cost. So it's an $18,000 project and I thought that should move forward.
Sorry, where is that?
The irrigation valve.
Irrigation valve for Holligan, it's back here, back town hall.
Oh.
Okay, let's see. Paddle court paint. This is another safety issue.
Which one is that?
The paint machine? I'm not seeing. I don't see the file for that one. Wait, I should have it in here. Okay, so. Paint builds up when the courts resurfaced. The surface becomes chipped and uneven over the years and the only way to fix it is to strip it down to the bare aluminum. So they want to resurface first, they want to resurface one and this would be an ongoing five-year project to do all five. And I felt that this was something we should do because of safety issues. And then we have the commercial freezer. At the beach, existing one is 20 years old. It requires a lot of repairs and part replacement. So I.
This is at Weed Beach?
This is at Weed Beach.
Okay.
So for $10,000, I felt it would be a costing to us not to have to be constantly repairing it or losing food. So I did put that one forward.
This is used by whoever the tenant is?
Concession, yes, who the tenant is. Then we had a couple of things for Pear Tree. One was to put together the bid package for the work that needs to be done in the parking lot, which I thought was important for us to get going. And the other one was an estimate of $50,000 worth of repairs on the bath house. It was one of those things that we've been hearing through the whole Pear Tree project that most people just wanted us to do some work on what was there to improve it. That would be within the amount that we were allowed to do before we'd have to elevate the building under the FEMA regulations. It's an estimate. It wasn't based on any specific plans, but I think it would be good for us to do for the people who utilize that beach.
Kate, do we, do we have any idea what's going to be done?
No, I do not, unless something, Lori Bourne might be able to answer that if you want.
What did you say the price was last, like that? No, 50.
Oh, yeah, that's great.
So those are the things I've put forward. If you wanted to, you know, if you have any questions on the things that, I'll pull up the main sheet again, the things that I did not. The pond air, the solar pond aerator at Cherry Lawn and paving the nature center driveway. They're just, the aerator I thought was a great idea, but trying to save some money. The nature center driveway. I wanted to wait on that a little bit and then we did get estimates in and the cost would be significantly higher than what this estimate was. So it'd be over $120,000. So Pam is going to review those estimates with Ed to see, you know, was that estimate of 120 reasonable? Evaluation of the three Little League fields at McJuan, it was something I felt that, okay, we could put it off another year. Explain to you already why projects over a million dollars were out and then replacing the gatehouse. That was just, you know, if we could put it off a year because there were other things that I thought were more, more urgent. And we did cut someplace.
How much is the gatehouse?
50,000. It's not ideal to put it off, but that's the one we, yeah.
With the parking area at the nature centers, the feeling that perhaps, given a little bit more time, the raw material costs would decrease? Or if you put it off?
You know, it was just a rough estimate. And, you know, what we got now from a quote from, it was, the cost would be a lot higher. So I think we need to look at what the, whether that quote was actually, you know, was it reasonable? It's not a, it's not a bid, so. It was just something I felt could wait over some of the other projects.
I mean, one thing to consider, and I'll get a lot of heat from Sarah on this, is that I noticed that in that parking area, there's a lot more traffic over the last 12 months because people are going in.
Dropping kids off.
And they're also going in and they're using those, those courts where they haven't used them before and they're parking in those areas and they're coming up and down. So you just may want to look in the usage because that parking lot may deteriorate a little bit more quickly than you might otherwise expect.
I think that's a decision that's now.
In your hands.
In your hands, yeah.
That's a capital project. Kate, the nature center driveway, are we talking about the part that's specifically for the nature center?
Yeah.
So just the part that.
Circle, like the, where you do the loop? Okay.
Is it a safety issue?
I believe it, you know, it has some safety issues, yes.
It's a loop and then there are a bunch of spaces in that back area.
It's not.
Draining down that circle.
It's like a town tour. We need a town tour and a lot of stuff.
It's the driveway. It's sinking near the entrance of the building. The water's not draining properly. So it needs to be regraded and repaved.
Is there water damage from?
To the building?
The drainage?
To the, to the roadway?
Nature center?
Some, yeah. I don't know about the, to the building, but, you know, understand the information we have now is if you put this in, you're putting in 120, not 50.
Right. Okay. Any other questions, Kate? Okay, any, anyone wanting to lodge any questions or concerns that we will be getting back to on? Yep, Lori?
Sure.
Sure.
Lori Bourne, Chair of Parks and Rec Commission, I think we're talking about our budget tonight. A few things I wanted to mention in no particular order. Kate did mention that the Darien Foundation has graciously agreed to pay for the bid package to get the Weed Beach Meadow and Trail project going. The Parks and Recreation did put the estimated cost of $1 million in our capital or cost budget, but I understand Kate has set that to the side for this particular budget that it would, that it's being handled outside of the budget, whatever that means. I'm not sure I completely understand. But, but that, that is something we hope to go forward with. And we do have a commitment from the Darien Foundation in writing to fund up to a third of that project, up to 350,000. We have an estimate of about a million dollars, but the bid package will allow us to, to go forward and fine tune that. Their commitment is not unended. There is a time limit on it, so we want to take advantage of that. We're, you know, that's something the commission is hoping to proceed with in the next year, so I did want to mention that. Given that the $25,000 that was in the budget will not be needed for that process, you know, we are hoping for one or two of the items, the smaller capital items to be reinstated. What is the aerator at Cherry Lawn? We really feel that's important. I have a picture here of four courts from last summer of what our pond looked like over the summer. It's pea green and disgusting. We get a lot of complaints about it. You probably know that the roof for the gazebo house now has been repaired. It looks lovely. And we have to go through the acceptance process to finish the renovation of the gazebo, so that should be done before the spring. That should draw people down to our beautiful gazebo. Additionally, the work we did on the invasives opened up a lot of the area around the pond. It's looking great. It's kind of opened up the acreage. So again, we're going to be drawing people down to the pond and the pond area and we don't really want that pond greening. For years, the challenge was how to get power, all the way down to power an aerator. But we kind of had a brainstorm this last summer. It came from personal experience of using solar panels on my boat. But we investigated that and turns out you can get a solar powered aerator. Brings the cost down and it would, would be a, you know, sort of a green way to get rid of the green in our pond. So I really like you guys to consider putting that back. If you're feeling very generous, you know, the stump grinder would be very helpful with the work on the invasives as we're taking trees and even some of these vines. You know, I have pictures, some of the vines are this big around. The Trees of Heaven, which we've done a lot of work on down at Weed Beach and some of the other, which are, they're bad trees. Our commission hates taking down trees. We will have long discussions on a single tree coming down. But the Trees of Heaven need to go because they host the spotter lantern fly, which probably many of you may have written about, is very problematic. And you actually need to get the roots out. We removed quite a few of them at Weed Beach over the last month. Our town staff has done that, but if we have to, if we don't get rid of the stumps, they will come back. So otherwise we're going to have to pay somebody to get the stumps. Pam also feels that DPW may be able to use the grinder as well as their dual side work or whatever. So putting those two back, we go, it's a little bit over $25,000, but terribly. So I did want to put my plug in for those. With regard to Pear Tree, we did meet with Neil Haff down at the property and he's going to come back to us some ideas. But we're talking about replacing the stalls, the light fixtures, maybe some tile. But the feedback we got from the survey we did last summer was that people want a fit and finish to the bathrooms that are more like Weed Beach. So given that we always, Neil was the architect at Weed, we thought he was a great place to start. He's going to be coming back to us with details, but he said to do the kinds of things to freshen it up. He said, you know, 50 was, he said he would have to work to keep it within that number. So, but we will come back with detail on that, what's specifically. So we're in, we're in the process of figuring it out. But we've heard time and time again, it's really just, we think of it as one building and it's actually two. Right now, we're really talking about the bathrooms, which include the showers, which just kind of, they just don't look great. The other side of the building, we will be thinking more about for a future, a future budget, but not, not this coming year. But we think we may want to do something outside of the building, whether even it's planters or shutters, something to make it look. So that's what's going on with that. And then the last thing I wanted to mention on the operating budget is, you know, Kate did mention that we had requested a, technically it isn't add to full-time staff, but the proposal was to fund that by four part-time positions, which totaled 67,000 in our budget. So it doesn't get us all, it would get us to the salary, but a little contribution towards the benefits, probably not all, all the way there. And of course, it depends, as we heard from the library, whether you hire somebody who's just covering their own benefits or has a family. But, you know, I've talked to the staff a lot about this and we've stretched them more and more and more in terms of the programs, things like the fireworks that the staff is now managing. We're now going to start having reservations for paddle tennis, which now needs to be, or excuse me, a misspoke pickleball. Because the demand is there and we're finding that we have a better way to organize it and also to get some revenue. They're doing more programming. You know, our, our gross revenue from programs is more than double from what it was with pandemic. That's very little on price increase. We're serving, we're providing more programs and serving a lot more residents and the same number of staff needs to handle this. You know, we have a paddle attendant who's down there in an office with a computer. Right now, that person's just kind of checking in, checking people on, turning on the heaters, maybe handling some cancellations. An individual could be down there and be part of our staff who's helping with reservations, who's helping customer inquiries. I mean, you just tell me how many people call, you know, day in, day out. I reserve for this, I need to change it. You know, Johnny was sick or how do I replace? I mean, the service they provide is phenomenal and we're doing it for more people and we're not supporting them. So the idea was to combine some of these positions, which they're also having a lot of trouble filling. And that takes time. But to bring somebody on staff that would become part of our team and be able to grow within the department and really support all of the work for what we feel is a fairly incremental cost. So, you know, we're happy to talk about it more, but we're asking them to do more and more. And I'm not even talking about Great Island and because I don't know where all that's going to land and whether that will be Pam's team's responsibility or not. But, but as is with our existing parks and programming, they continue to grow. We're asking them to do more and more and they're trying to piece it together with a lot of part-time positions, which are hard to find. There are people who come and go every year. They're not vested in our parks, in our community. And when Pam presented this to me and talked to members of Parks and Rec RTM committee about it, it just seemed to make some sense in terms of servicing the community. I've said it once and I'll say it again, our parks have to be thought of as an essential service. We really do a lot for the community here and us and our residents. And I have a lot of lovely new young family neighbors, we're the old folks in the neighborhood now, but they love to talk to you how much they're loving the beaches, how much they're loving the program, they're signing up for this and signing up for that. That's all these guys, you know? And it's a rubber band that's stretched pretty tight, but something's going to give it something. So just would like you guys to think about that a little bit more.
I'm just having a hard time logistically and I think Kate had mentioned it, like having four part-time positions and all of a sudden roll into one and how that job description is going to look. Is there any way that you can kind of provide us with the job description of those four part-timers that are going away?
I've had the, the job description and we're talking about four distinct, different types of skills.
So I'd love to see how that translates to one job.
Coordinator of events at one thing, being a security person at another, being a desk clerk at another time. I would be supportive of personnel if I felt that it was the right thing, not kind of jerry-rigged.
It's not really a security person as we're going to reorganize it?
Okay, you know, what we're, what we're going to do is we're going to collect questions. We're going to let people speak their concerns, but we're going to come back with the answers.
Thank you.
So just any other questions for me?
I'm just going to provide some question numbers for answers.
Perfect.
First, our revenues net and can we finally break out what the virgin processing fees are to revenues? Not only in park and rec, but throughout the program. Number two, I know there was a discussion yesterday on some research that being done and some part-time in the finance, which I fully support and have for a number of years. But I don't believe that any of the park and rec fees or rentals have service charges. And I believe it could be a significant number to cover some of the expenses. I've heard, and I was just curious because it was mentioned, but I hadn't been told from nobody in town, but somebody told me that paid lessons were not allowed on town courts, so that's something we can answer. All right.
We'll find out now.
You know, I agree, I hear so much about the pickleball courts and if there's a decrease in the, in the usage of the tennis, you know, can we look at Weed Beach to set up some more pickleball courts? And what would be the return on investment based upon the demand for that sport at this time? Just looking ahead. Does the DAF give? for that sport at this time? Just looking ahead. Does the DAF gift them to go for the RTM approval? And if it does, are there ARPA funds that we might have to be using that we could apply to some of the capital requests? And this is just a little bit of humor, and I'm sure some people may not appreciate. But to reduce the cost of the ISA, I still support the Texas solution presented by.
It's still unpopular, by the way.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Jack. Okay, then. All right. Any other questions on?
Could I ask that you get a better explanation of the exclusion of projects over a million dollars? What exactly does that mean? How does it look like? How will the approval process work for those projects going forward? It sounds like they're from on-budget projects to off-cycle approvals.
Well, the basis for is, when you were on, I think you were on the Board of Select at the time, when the board voted that projects of over a million dollars would require, that was the threshold for a building committee. So for me, it's two parts. It's the size, but also going back to, it's the building committee, and it's the funding process that we tried to put in place after having done the renovations here at the Madison Center, where we ran so far over budget, where our preference is to put the projects out to bid and get a good number before we ask for the funding amount. Using, we really wanted to do that for the school projects, but the state won't allow us to do it. So I fully support the project, but it should be put out to bid, and we should get the real number, and then we should ask for the money. Because let's just say, you know, the estimate is a million dollars. What if it's 10% off? What if it's 15% off? Then you've got to go back and ask for more money. So it's not trying to avoid the operating budget process or the capital budget process. It's trying to make sure that we put the right number on the project when we ask for the money.
So that sounds like a great approach, number one. And I presume that it depends on when those bids come back in, as to whether it gets folded into the subsequent year's budget or whether it comes off-cycle.
Well, and that will be up to the Board of Finance.
And a million dollars, it seems to be a budget necessary.
No, no, I just, I want to understand how it was anticipated.
And just so you know, it's going to come up again in the public works, because there's a million and a half dollar bridge that it did the same thing with. So.
Okay, anything else for Kate for Park and Rec? No? Okay. All right. Thank you. If you want to stay, that's great. But if you have a game or something to get to, I want to understand.
No, I go to the library a lot. No one seems to talk about that.
You and all the tweens in town, I guess.
That's the.
Actually, it's preferred that you go to the pickleball.
It's really funny. My daughter goes to the library all the time.
That's the home office.
We have the teens at the library.
I'm there in the.
Get over to the pickleball court.
I'm out of there by dinnertime. That's when they all come. That's my.
That's your second office.
Yeah, that's the satellite office. It's a connected office for Brody O'Connor and O'Connor.
Okay. All right, circle back. Kate, what do we have?
Next budget.
Police, police. Okay. So, the elephant in the room, the chief has asked for two new full-time police officers. I did put those forward. We have not increased the head count since 1987. So, you know, he had given me a heads up before submitting the budget that was in there, and I had had some time to think about it. And one of the things that I did consider is, we have two officers who spend about nine months out of the year at the Board of Education. I could take the easy route and say, well, bring back the SROs, and there's your two officers. But I didn't think that that was, that that was the right thing to do. I do think we should consider asking the Board of Ed to reimburse us for the cost of those officers in the same way that we reimburse them for the cost of the IT personnel that we use from them. The budget does anticipate some level of turnover. We have one officer who today's his last day. So we know already that, you know, there's that one retirement. We anticipate with a force of 51 that there will be other retirements during the next fiscal year. So you'll see, for the first time, we've built in a turnover account into the patrol budget. And that's based on looking at, you know, if somebody of rank goes, what the trickle-down is, or if somebody who is at a top step in patrol, what the, you know, what the impact is when you're taking out the high salary and you're placing at the low salary. So we felt comfortable putting in a turnover amount this year for the first time. So one of the new officers is intended to manage the accreditation process. The role will also include managing FOI responses. The FOI for body foot cam, body cam footage can take hours, probably even days, to go through, because there are often multiple angles, multiple cameras that they have to review the footage on, and they have to go through all of it to be sure that they blur out faces of people who must be protected. The other officer would be intended to be a narcotics officer. So with that as the lead in.
And then we'll have, we'll be staffing the traffic again?
As a result of hiring new people.
Right.
Well, we have to get to the full complement that we would have, but yes.
So how long have we been operating? I mean, it feels like we've never, we haven't been at 51 for quite a while.
We haven't been at 51 in a while.
Right, okay.
Where are we now?
We are at 46 today. We'll be at 45 tomorrow. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And it does.
And that does include the, the captains, right? Captains and the chief.
That's the total.
That's the total, yes.
So 45 tomorrow total.
We do have people that we're about higher.
And then we'll bring it up to like maybe?
Kate, do these include, these numbers include, like, will we need to get more cars? Will we need, does it include, like?
No.
Equipment, like?
It includes things like uniforms.
Rifles?
Weapons, not rifles.
Sorry.
But increase in vehicle count now.
Okay. Would we, would you foresee we would need a new vehicle? Would that be a tipping point?
No, no. You know, one thing that we need more of is lockers for the female officers.
Okay. It's another conversation.
It's another conversation, yeah. They're working on it.
Okay.
But.
It's a good problem to have.
I think maybe we just swap lock rooms. I'll start running through the, the various segments. So the administration budget, this is where you see the chief, the captains, the administrative lieutenant, and some of the administrative staff. We're not looking at a big increase here. And one thing, you know, I mentioned this the other night. One thing we have done a lot of in this year's budget is moving conference and training monies, you know, rejiggering where they are. So what you're going to see in this budget is a lot of conference budgets moved into the training, the professional standards section of the budget, so that anything that's really training, not a conference, we're moving over there. So you're seeing a lot of that moving around. But one thing that we do have this year with Captain Marin going through the FBI Academy, there is, he is now going to that conference along with the chief. Dues and professional licenses, a little bit of an uptick there for all the associations that they belong to, including National Association of Women Law Enforcement Executives. Professional, just one more. No. Okay. Going down, mailing costs dropping, clothing, that's where you see the, you would see the clothing allowances for new officers, and looking to give the prisoners slightly better meals. Go ahead.
Wellness, I was just looking for some more information.
Okay, sorry. That's what I was looking for before. Wellness. So the chief is proposing to implement a wellness program. What we would do there is provide some incentives. It can be a number of things, but some of the thoughts are provide some incentives for gym memberships, provide some medical testing. That would be advantageous for officers to head off things. We are eliminating in another budget, the cops and kids program, which is also $10,000. So this would be a net zero.
And why are we eliminating that program?
Lack of interest.
Really? That was 9,500, right?
No, 10.
It was 10 even?
So do you foresee the wellness program to help with recruitment? Is that sort of an initiative to try to get new officers in, considering there's such a shortage?
Everything that we can throw up for recruitment and retention is a positive.
Yeah.
Officer wellness really has come to the forefront of a lot of thinking here. And one of the things that Kate alluded to is the calcium cardiac screening is not covered by insurance, but I've seen multiple presentations on this. Every sizable police department who has gone through this is voluntary, right? The officer doesn't have to do it. But every sizable police department, including Stanford, has identified two or three people that are in immediate need of cardiac intervention. Unfortunately, life expectancy for most retirement officers is grim. The schedules that we keep, the food sometimes that we eat, this is one, something I'm worried in terms of keeping our people in the best shape that they can be.
The cops and kids, when you say lack of interest, is it like nobody signs up for this? Is it publicized? Is it a program that there's any ability to resuscitate?
It's always been run through the depot.
Okay.
We've restructured the depot. It's not clear over the last two or three years, interest has just dwindled. And we tell you, we have very few kids looking to engage these programs, usually the same kids for three or four years while they're in that demographic.
Right.
Something that, not to say we could ever bring it back, but it's just something now that's just on both sides, from the welfare side and the, and the B side, just kind of a surprise for that.
It's a shame, but.
It is a shame. We have teenager, like, grown up in their teenagers, and instead of their, you know, first encounter with the police pulling them over or chasing them out of a party or something, they may have had, you know, exposure in those programs.
But they're getting exposure as, in the schools, at, you know, the early teenage years, you know, so.
That's a whole other discussion, but the kids are getting exposure to our school liaison officers on a regular basis as well, too.
Right.
Clearly, this board knows that community engagement is the whole market we're all over about, not all of it, just including the elementary school.
Okay.
Medical services, this is for mandated testing for the annual behavioral health assessment and drug testing. So there's a slight uptick there. Okay. We're going to go from there to investigative and youth, the Detective Bureau, Native Bureau. There's not much change here, but this is where you see the cops and kids coming up in this line.
So Kate, you're leaving 500 in there?
Yes. Why are we leaving 500 in there?
That's for the Citizens Police Academy.
There you go.
Oh.
So we're getting them while they're not, because when they grow up, we're getting them.
We have gained a Citizens Police Academy back this year. We've had a lot of interest.
Yeah, a lot of interest, right?
So we just want to have enough money for some materials taken out.
Sure. Okay.
Patrol. So just so you know, if you haven't gone through and looked down this, I mean, I want you to appreciate the detail that goes into a budget. Every officer, okay, is accounted for. But this is also where, when you go way down to the bottom, we have a turnover amount estimated now. And we do still have to go back through and add the, the impact of the contract negotiations. Overtime is down. That's, you know, based on their estimates. This is when you'll see, you know, if we end up being down police officers, overtime may go up, and full-time goes down. So you see some balancing act happening in those two accounts during the year.
Is there a reason you're forecasting it to go down? Overtime to go down substantially?
Hopefully, we'll be at full strength.
Okay.
That's one component. Another significant component is that the demographic of the workforce, not just in public safety, but across the board, they value the life board balance and looking for more time off rather than gaining overtime.
A little cultural shift.
So we do allow for officers to take compensatory time, not across the board in carte blanche, but do allow them to take compensatory time. They're only allowed to use the compensatory time if it doesn't cause a shortage at the time they request it. That's not an ironclad guarantee that something might not transpire interim, where we do have to backfill on overtime, but it's not all the time. So there's proceedings there of paying overtime. That's historically always been the case.
Okay.
Yeah. Kate, you said something, made me think. What is the impact of the contract negotiations on this budget?
How much is it? It's, in dollars, I can't recall. Off the top of my head, it was .03 mils.
But is it like 10% over this budget, or?
No, no.
Okay. Okay.
No, in the first year, the wage increase is two and three quarters.
Okay.
So you have to add in two.
Right, I know we have some different expenses. I just wasn't sure if you knew what the percentage of over this is.
Not off the top of my head.
Okay, just curious.
Special equipment repair and maintenance, that's, it's a number of things, but the, the reason for the big bump is scanner calibration for the FARO system, which is the accident reconstruction system.
Right.
So that's a new item this year. And equipment, you know, that's what I just did. Okay, so that was the only, that was all I had. You see, you know, decreases here and there in, like, marine gear and supplies. Those were based on the request, not something I did. So that was all I had in the patrol.
Kate, on operating supplies, again, like, it looks like.
There's not much of a change there.
Yeah, but it looks like it's kind of underused. Only spent 7,500 so far. Does that seem right?
That, yeah, that's, that would average out to about 16,000 for the year, so I'd have to go back and look and see if that's something that's a little bit seasonal.
Kate, is this budget where the two new officers, the salaries are?
Uh, okay.
Kate, is this budget where the two new officers, the salaries are?
Um, they would be in the, um, patrol line, I believe. Is that where you stop them, Don? The new, new officers are in the patrol?
Right, they're in the patrol.
Yeah, here we go, put down here.
Oh, got it, okay, fair. So can I ask a question? If, is one, so one officer is going to be primarily responsible for the accreditation as well as the body cam footage?
So it doesn't mean that the two new people are going to be doing that?
Okay, got it, you're, okay, you're requesting for one role to be focused on those.
So basically, you know, bring in two new patrol officers, which means that somebody more senior can be assigned to those other duties.
Freeing up. Got it.
And not solely administrative tasks.
Right, I was just curious if you needed, I'm wondering if I know you have one officer right now that is primarily doing the body cam footage, is that correct?
Yeah, it's like four or five of us.
Oh, is it? Oh, okay, okay, I thought you had one, okay.
We have an incident where.
It's better to have more than one.
Where all six officers on a shift are at a medical incident. And we were there for one or two hours. And we get an F O Y request for that reduction time for the juveniles involved, could take in 40 hours. And we, we have got, we got over 50 F O Y requests in calendar year 2022. Not all of them involve body cam requests, but this is, they exploded.
What was the previous year's?
We probably doubled or tripled in the last 10 years.
Got it, good.
And we didn't have body cam footage that we had to look at before we could release it. And we can't release it without careful analysis of it. Not that we change anything, but we have to know what's on that body cam before we release it.
I can give you a simple example, we have one that we're working on now, where there's no victims that necessarily have to be redacted, but we have five videos where we have to search for where they talk about their social security number. And we don't want that getting out in the public. So that's hours of reviewing the videos to find out where they say that and then redacting that. And that's just one. And that's a simple one. So imagine one with children or, you know, a sex assault, but, um, or something like that, it's a lot of redaction.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. All right. We'll quickly go to records, there's not a lot of note there. In fact, I think my note says nothing of note. Reduction in overtime, um, copy costs going up. But there's not, nothing, overall, this budget is flat. Communications. So, um, this budget does, it is a budget that calls for nine civilian dispatchers, we're at seven now. Hoping to get the other two in place. And we shall see.
Would this be the, the end, I mean, that would be the fulfillment of the dispatcher's program that we've been hoping for?
Um, we would hope to also bring on some per diem, you know, hire some part timers to fill in, um, when there's vacancies, you know, somebody on vacation. But nine full times civilians is our goal.
Right, okay. Is there like two per shift?
That would give us two per shift, 24/7.
Okay.
Professional standards. So this is where you see here in the conferences and meetings line, and then in the training services line, where things have been moved, moved down like this big adjustment of $16,000. This is another big uptick in the employee education tuition by contract. We provide a certain level of tuition assistance to officers. And the chief, the administration does a survey, basically, of the officers to see who's, you know, who's in a degree program. So this is based on the number of officers who would be seeking degrees this year. So some of the increase in the conferences and trainings would, is, does include for the new narcotics officer to go to training, the FBI conference, women in law enforcement conference, and E M R training, emergency medical response.
That one's not in there?
That one's not in there? It was hard to go through my notes because my notes had things from where they were originally and not where they got moved to, so, sorry.
Yeah, the negotiators are in there and, um, the school resource officers.
Um, that's all I had in that area. Um, fleet, there's really not a lot, the issue in fleet is it's hard to get cars. So, um.
How many are still in order from previous?
Oh, last year's, we haven't gotten last year, the current year's at all.
We have one, one from this fiscal year that we can't get. At least we can't get it at a price point where the chief is willing to pay.
Yeah. So, I mean, what, you know, what that does mean is our repair and maintenance cost may, well, it's stable, but, you know, that's an iffy, iffy proposition. But other than that, there's nothing significant, no significant changes in this budget. Station maintenance, we have had a little bit of turnover there, long time employee retired, part time employee moved up into the full time position, and we have a new part time person just starting, so, um, the salaries reflect those changes in personnel. And then some, so increasing the cost of facility repair. The water and sewer are both up, those are related to an ongoing facility issue we have, where basically we have to clean out the, we have to jet water through inferno nets. So that's what you're seeing there. And the heating fuel is up. And I think that was all I had to note in the operating. There wasn't much of note in the animal control budget, it's a small budget and not much of an increase, so it wasn't even go there. So.
Kate, on that one, um, the medical for in the animal, are you just cleaning up accounts when you reduce that one?
Well, I look back at the history and, um, you know, it's if we need to pay the vet to, and historically, we haven't been spending that level, so I just, I cut it.
Just cleaning it up.
Yeah. Um, you know, same thing with the advertising, we're just not spending it, so trying to, you know, keep the cost down when we can. All right, were there any other questions on, I don't know if you want to spend any time talking about the proposed new positions while you have the chief pressing? Or do you want to go on to capital?
Well, I mean, I read the memo, I understand the metrics beyond the document, is there anything additional insight that you would like to tell us?
I think whenever we have this discussion, we have to put it in historical context, in, in my time here. We've increased one in law enforcement by one. Prior to that, I believe it had only been increased by two within the previous 20 to 30 years. And in that time, when I started here, we had three officers that did not work midnights, so they only worked days and evenings in patrol. So most of the time, you had an additional officer working in patrol that we don't have now. In that time as well, we carved out two school resource officers. And in 1983, we had a youth detective and a training officer that was one person that did both. Now, we have a training lieutenant, we have an administrative lieutenant, school resource officers, but we don't have the, we don't have the extra personnel. And the way the department has evolved over the last, I would say, two or four chiefs, is that we have changed the way we staff the department, where there was a time when you got promoted to sergeant, you were now the dispatcher. And you worked the front desk for the remainder of your career until you got promoted to lieutenant. And lieutenants ran the road, now sergeants run the road. Lieutenants are moved to these administrative positions, which is the best use of funds and the expertise of these senior staff members. Now we have a kind of a little bit of dilemma that we have sergeants that are not directly supervised. They're supervised, but they're not directly supervised. That is another, another avenue that I look to reorganize the department, so it's to the point where mid-management and first line supervisors are supervised by a lieutenant. There's nothing more important now in, in law enforcement, professional police, proper supervision. Everyone can see the videos what happened when people are not properly supervised, right? So that's, that's, that's my main proponent of the, that I think the department needs to be organized. We're close, but I think we're going to get to the ideal situation where moving forward, I think the room to reset the first step, it may not be 40 years until the chief comes back and asks for additional staff, but it shouldn't be in the next decade.
Thank you.
Kate, may I add to that a little bit?
Please.
As far as what our citizens are asking from us, a lot of it is traffic complaints, our marine division. And those officers, our traffic division hasn't been staffed in the last year. And myself, lieutenant, we're, we're, we have to go out and, you know, do the stuff that our community is asking of us, you know? And also during the summer months, there's two officers out of patrol now staffing the marine division, which we need as well. I mean, you've seen all the accidents out there and, you know. So I think it's just, it would help us get back to our patrol that we need for our community to make them happy and enforce the laws they want us to enforce properly.
Staffing remains in flux. I think we ordered, I think we ordered officers to work in calendar year 2022, I think it was over 400 times. Officers that were not scheduled to work or ordered to work because of staff issues. We don't like to burn out your officers. You know, in Lucy situations, you come, I have to work, but you don't want to work. So we're going to, I see over there, not finding folks out.
You know, I, I think, chief, I would like to see, you know, I go back to, you haven't been at full for a while, I'd like some metrics on that.
When the last time you moved to full strength?
Yeah, yeah.
I tell you, that was really, it's not in the chief's tenure. So, as a chief, sure, we're not going to have full strength.
So I, I guess it, it would be fair to ask if you haven't been at full strength, how, how are you going to get to full strength? Just adding two more spots isn't, you know, how, how are you going to hire these people?
On the flip side of the coin, the calendar year, except for the commute to get here, is a very desirable duty to work in. Now, we had, we're talking about turnover, we're talking about retention. We took two officers from Vermont and we've not sweetened the deal to have them return to Vermont. So they, one was only here for, I think, 90 days. But they sweeten the deal to get them back, but we're still attracting quality employees. And I think our cadre of officers here now, I don't see any newer officers looking to go on to bring your pastures or moving out to another occupation. I think the folks that were looking for that have made the move, and I think the folks that we have here now, you're going to see a fairly long term commitment. Much chagrin of at least one Fairfield County chief would have taken one of his officers, that's the next officer that we're shorting in. So we've had very good success over the last five to 10 years. I want to call it, you know, free agency.
I was just going to say.
If you don't want me to leave the town of Darien and go work at another police department, that has not happened in probably over 20 years, I think. The one officer who did that came back to the very, just a matter of finding the grass, it's not very long to the other side. So this remains, in the law enforcement profession, this remains a very attractive community to work in. That said, the amount of people who want to enter this profession is not as robust as it once was. Like I told this board once before, in the early ages of 1983, we had 440 applicants for one position. Now we get 40 applicants, perhaps for three positions. I'm not looking to look less than the standards, I'm not looking to take folks that are, that we're not comfortable with here, because I know the, I know what the talent expects, the quality of officer they expect and deserve, so we're not looking just to fill. I'd rather not fill the spots than try to fill the people that we have any hesitation about serving here as police officers.
Are these new police officers, like new to policing, they're brand new? Or they, you can recruit them, I mean, I don't know the different levels.
Right now, we're, we're probably 50/50, taking officers that need to go to the police academy.
Okay.
Six months, and half are probably coming from other A B Cs, either from out of state where they need a truncated program, not a full six months, or in this case, Fairfield certified officer comes here in about 10 or 14 days or 20 days, they're on the road. A Darien police uniform because they are ready to go. We're not losing them to other departments.
I guess my question is, these two new positions you're adding.
We don't know what they'll be.
You don't know what they'll be?
No.
Okay. You're not saying you're overqualified or underqualified?
We're always open for applications. It's rare that we don't have a, a recruitment drive going on. This is going to John Jay this week, you know, in New York City, and they have a huge population of justice folks in education there. Trying, we do everything we can to try to attract the best in the register. With very few exceptions, I think I've done a fairly good job. There's a reason we don't see the Darien Police Department on CNN.
Let's keep it that way.
Chief, when's the last time you asked for additional staff?
I'd have to say, I've been here 22 years, there hasn't been an ask for new officer in that time. And we.
You've been here longer than that, so.
In, in the 40 years that I've served here, we have increased head count of sworn officers by one.
That was 1987.
87, okay.
And that was pretty, Chief Anderson won, so that's how far we're going.
Can I ask, what was the highest number of officers that you've had in the past five years? In the past one, five years, how many, like, what's the highest number of officers maybe you've had?
Fully sworn, fully ready to go, not in training, I think we got to 49 once for a very short period of time.
Yeah, I think there was a point where we were at 51 with people in the academy.
They were still in the academy.
Yeah.
Got it.
But it didn't last, it was, you know, a month or two there.
And once you're in the academy, you're in the academy for six months, and then once you come back to the academy, it's almost another three months before you're actually ready to go.
Any other questions for Don on this? John?
Can I just cut them down just to have a quick reminder of this?
On this one, yeah, round them off, Jack.
Okay. What programs' expenses are currently being paid by the police force along the fund that should be in the town budget?
Slow down.
That Kate might discuss with you. What would be the effect?
Jack, Jack, hang on, I'm going to pass the brighter.
I'm sending them to you, I'm just putting them on record. What would be the effect of moving force alarm back to the town funds and giving a stipend to the commission? I understand that since the I T M put on the restrictions, the I T M would need to initiate such change. I'm in favor of that and talking to Frank Kettle to get that over. I've actually spoken to him, to the commission. Just to reduce the demand on the police officers so they can do police work, but I don't know what the qualifications are. Can the F O I be done by a trained civilian as opposed to a police officer? I don't know what the requirements are and what the logistics are, that's just a question. The forty-six that we currently have, does that include the one that is currently in the academy?
Yes.
Okay, and they should be back shortly, right?
We just had, the officer just started at the academy.
Oh, okay, so there should be nine months before they become.
Five months.
Yeah, yeah, six months then the nine.
We do have one officer that graduated from the academy seven months ago, he's almost ready to go.
So you have another one in there, that from what that other one is.
Thanks.
Okay. And, and this is just a question on the overall budget. There are carryovers. Do we accrue those carryover sick days and everything in the town budget on an annual basis as opposed to just the? And because one of the things in improving the contract with ninety percent of our officers that will be at the top grade at the end of the four-year contract, that means that, you know, I'm worried five, six years from now whether or not we're going to see some training.
So when you say carryovers, you mean the value of the sick time?
Yeah.
Okay, so no. However, in the annual audit report, we do, we value, we're obligated to value the cost of any terminal pay that we would have to do if we like ceased operations on June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. How much would we have had to pay out from employees?
I know that we did it in the annual report, I just didn't know.
It's not a budgetary item.
If we have regular people.
Yeah.
That ends it.
We should keep moving on because we have.
Can I just get my educational question really easy? On the, on the patrol area where you showed the two line items for the new officers, does that reflect only the salary and the other benefits and expenses?
They're budgeted.
In another expense line item, Maryam?
I, I'm going to object to the hidden.
Well, I, I mean, they appear in another.
They appear in another, yes.
Okay, perfect. Because I, I saw the number and I didn't reconcile.
But that's what we.
I understand why not.
All of our salary line items are the salary. The only thing you see besides base salary in the salary line item would be something like longevity or an educational differential. Anything like medical pension, those are all in the employee benefits area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, capital. So there's a couple, there's a couple of big things in here. But again, you know, like I said, I was looking at safety and cost-saving things. Vehicle replacement, a lot of the ones in the police office, police department capital are ongoing programs such as vehicle replacement every year. AED replacements on a regular basis, MDT replacements on a regular basis. So the big ones, and the portable radios, we're replacing radios every year in some department or another.
I added a bump this year.
It's a lot, right? So the really big new item here would be the CAD system replacement. The CAD system is the computer-aided dispatch. So it's two hundred and twenty-seven thousand almost. And the version that we're on is no longer receiving updates. It is still supported, but it's at the end of life or approaching the end of life. And it does need to be replaced. I think it's important that we do this. So I don't know if you have any questions on it. I would take advantage of the expertise of our chief and captain if you do. The, the other items, the ones that I cut were priority two and three. Things that, you know, would be good to do, but we could maybe put off a year.
So you cut the chairs and you cut.
I cut the chairs and I cut the ballistic plate carriers and I really didn't like doing it. But they seem to, well, they were less of a priority when we look at our priority matrix. They're not an ongoing replacement like the AEDs, you know, we need to have those up-to-date, their safety thing. The MDTs, those are the police, the mobile data, data terminals in the, in their patrol cars, kind of the portable office. And the radios, no, they're just the radios. We need to keep those current. So if there was something that could be cut, those seem the most likely.
Any questions on capital, anyone?
Just a quick question for the vehicles. How many vehicles are in this capital? Because I'm not making it right, just curious.
Four, right, Kate?
It's four marked vehicles.
Got it, thank you.
And those are all outfitted with everything, right?
That's, that's inclusive of all the.
Okay, not like the fire truck where it's another.
Add here and add there.
Oh, in the fire marshal?
Right.
Right, yeah. I don't like doing that way. The way the police do it, that's the perfect way, all in.
Any other questions?
I can talk about the police budget.
Nope.
I just want to make it public that, you know, after the demos, as the, the share services captain's kind of driving the bus and now on budget preparation, she gets her job for the first time on this rodeo. He's kind of getting drawn in, you have to do it. But I especially want to give a shout out to Mike Santos, who's a records officer. You see the data in there about salaries and everything? He runs all the magic there and I'll tell you what, it's down to the penny. And it would take me a month of Sundays and I could not do what he does with, with those numbers. So I'm indebted to him and the woman's job every year making sure that that's right.
And it's, you know, I just want to echo that, you know, I, I hope you appreciate as you go through and look at the detail on some of these budgets. We are looking, you know, and building these budgets up from zero. We're not just throwing three percent on last year. You know, department heads are really building these from the bottom. Salary line items and medical line items. If you go and look at our medical insurance item, we're accounting for everybody. We know what union they're in, so what premium share they have, what level of coverage.
There's a lot.
There's a lot of work that goes into this.
May I just make one statement before we leave? I just want to talk about, I understand why you cut the chairs. I just want to maybe discuss how I think important these chairs are. They're for our dispatchers who sit down there forty-four seven. And they are the chairs that we bought when we made the building, which was eleven years ago. They're falling apart. They are a cost that upfront looks like a lot for a chair, but these have lasted eleven years. And I think they're due and we want to make them happy and comfortable and I don't want the chairs falling apart on them. And I would hate to have to like piecemeal a chair here and there every year until we get up to five, you know, or three or four, however we have down there. So I just, if you can relook at that, that would be helpful.
Al, is that the same manufacturer?
I don't believe it's the, I don't recall if it's the same manufacturer.
I think it is, I think it's Iron Horse. I already repaired these chairs several times and I get a bill for a chair repair and I see four, about four digits. I, I just kind of cringe to get these replacement parts, to get these chairs done.
Have we seen any bills, repair bills?
I don't see all the individual bills. I, you know, if you want to put back the chairs, I have no issue with that. I was, you know.
I know, you're.
Trying to.
I know, you're working hard. You're working hard and I know that.
What kind of chairs are these?
I know they're adding to the budget.
They're sitting all day, yep.
Well, thank you for speaking to that.
Yes.
That's really helpful. And when we are doing our discussions, I'm sure we'll, we'll consider what you said. Any other questions for Chief or Captain?
No, thank you.
Thank you so much. Really, thank you for all of your work on your budget, which your whole team.
Before, I just get a quick break.
Just hoping that we get a favorable, favorable opinion out of them tonight and so on.
That's tonight.
Going to go play.
Nobody else wants a game card, I don't know. Not in this town, especially that guy.
Think I'm the one last time, right?
Yeah.
Bring it home.
Make it snappy. Kidding. And that, that was the show.
That ain't clean up for a reason.
Kate had to go get her auxiliary notebook for all the public works done.
We do need bigger screens to be able to read what's up.
It's not in the budget this year, Josh, I'm sorry.
Get some binoculars.
Yeah, that, that got pushed out in the six-year plan, I'm sorry.
So Sarah, there was a booking on top?
There was what?
No, it's packed in here today.
There was a lot of meetings today.
Yeah. Lots of kids playing basketball.
Thank you, I drove right by because you told me.
Right, because it's not worth like.
Okay, so. Public works, public works. Nothing much to the budget, it's just.
Actually.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, starting with management and engineering. So not a lot of changes here. Slight reduction in the amount that we're going to use seasonal temporary. Professional services, this is where we do some surveys. So we're just, Ed was proposing a decrease, trying to control costs, not needing as much in terms of surveys. Yeah, there's, you can see again the telecommunications and just some minor decreases in here, but it's a very stable budget. Going to roadway, this is one of the bigger parts of the budget, roadway and walkway management. If you're not aware, our highway superintendent had designed earlier this year, we are hiring for replacement. So savings based on that changeover have been built into the full-time salary line. Again, slight reduction in seasonal temporary salary, overtime staying stable. One thing let me point out about this budget, their contract expires June thirtieth of this year. So you're not seeing any wage increases other than steps that are due, built into any of the public works. I should have said that about Parks and Rec as well, they're in the same union. So if somebody who's due a step on July one, you would see that, but there's no general wage increase. Traffic marking, is this down because we don't need as much yellow paint this year? Paving services are down because we don't need as many catch, to replace as many catch basins this year.
Wait, wait, go back to the paint.
That's the double, that's the yellow paint. We're doing, not doing as many double line, yellow road, double yellow line roads.
How are we on white paint? I'm totally serious. We're good? Okay.
Staying.
So we have crosswalks.
How is, how is paving worked out? Because we had this pause because of raw material supplies. Are you catching up on paving or where do we stand on that?
The bid is coming in, what, next week? The ninth, okay. So we haven't, we haven't gotten the bids in yet, but the plan was to do it in the spring and the summer.
I'm sorry, so to do what in the spring?
The paving.
No, no, I'm talking about the catch-up, I know we're always doing paving, but, but we slowed down paving or.
We didn't do it this, we didn't do it this summer because the prices were so high.
Totally get that. How are you catching up on paving?
We're doing it in April.
We're doing it in the spring.
So we're doubling up?
Oh, you're actually doubling up.
Yeah, yeah, we're doubling up, yeah. So we'll do it in the spring and summer of twenty-three.
Got it, understood.
There's not usually paving in the spring, right? It usually doesn't start until July or something.
Around the school vacation in April.
April's going to be busy in town.
We hope. We open the bids in a couple of weeks.
We're paving in April, which may not do as much in the future.
Gotcha.
The residents are willing to update.
They are.
Is there a schedule that's available to people that tells you which ones are getting done first? Yeah?
No.
It is the most.
Did I just ask a loaded question?
There is, there is. Posted, he's just giving you a hard time.
There's not a schedule.
Okay. Priority list?
We're flexible.
We don't want, we don't want to go out and say, we're going to do these roads and then have the bids come in high and have to knock a road off.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Then the residents will call.
Okay.
I was going to say, just say no, you tripled our FOI budget.
We'll be charged for that, right? F O I.
So radio repair and maintenance, Edwin. My note on this was that we have additional radios on the buildings and antennas causing a one-time bump in this budget.
I started keeping track of radio repair costs.
And what are we at?
Well, from what I can see, for radio repair only, it's a hundred and sixty-six thousand, just for radio repair. Slightly down from last year.
But then we get into the radio replacement.
Right.
Which never, never does end, so. Streetlights, as you know, we bought our streetlights a few years ago. So this is just the cost of maintaining them and we do have a little bit of just-in-case money in there. Motor fuel, this is the kind of sucky one.
Kind of.
The, this is based on our bid price, which is three fifteen a gallon. So, you know, you're looking at, you know, gas prices out there, they, you know, you think three fifteen is good, but that was a little difficult to take, so. Heating fuel, we are looking at a seventeen percent increase in the cost of natural. Okay, my notes don't make sense. I have seventeen percent, but it's now at forty-four percent. Was seventeen percent the usage?
The year before.
The year before, at seventeen percent this year.
Decreased it just before the, or as we were submitting last year's budget this time. So it was never put into the budget calculations. And then this coming year, they bumped it up in August about forty-something percent. So I called both of them for this year's budget.
Tires, if you do this long enough, you get to see the rhythm. Every other year, we replace the loader tires and the tire budget goes up. And then, how is our ice budget looking right now?
Low, right? You would imagine.
You asked me how my glue is soft?
Yeah.
I mean, moving is very dull.
Knock on wood.
Been out maybe three times, four times, probably be out tonight too, but it's just softening. We're full. I bought, I bought out in May and then I just bought another five hundred at the local price of seventy. I don't know what those things do. It kind of fluctuates five, ten bucks either way. It has nothing to do with snow.
Would there be any chance that we, if the weather continues like it is, that we could use all of this year's and reduce next year's?
Ed, didn't I see somewhere that you, I think you normally budget for seven storms and you dropped it to five?
I don't think I adjusted the storm count, I don't believe so. I'd have to take a look.
I don't think I saw that somewhere.
Well, all I really did was increase the price by basically a dollar a ton of what I buy.
Just hope we don't have that much here in twenty-eleven.
Money's there, you know, to explain that, a reduction. And then February's going to come.
Well, you know, maybe we definitely. Well, you know, maybe we definitely work finance.
You can, you can hold the salt over the summertime, whatever's left in.
Yeah, but there's only so much we can put in the shed.
Okay, that's my question, I guess.
Yeah, so that's what I was kinda getting at. If we, if we use everything, you know, if we don't need a lot more for the rest of this year, you know, we don't use it. Fill a shed, and then maybe we can do what we have to buy next year. Solid waste, what I really wanna point out here is, um... We are in the last year of our contract, and so this budget assumes that there will be an increase in the rate. We are continuing to deal with increased tonnage. Um, so as you recall, we increased the rates that we charge earlier.
Right.
What's the rate increase that you're factoring in?
I don't have the breakdown between the tonnage increase and the rate increase. Ed, do you?
We went from paying 99 a tonne, we're charging 118 now.
No, what do we, what do we estimate the increase will be for our, for us when the contract ends?
In 2024?
Or do we not wanna say that because we're negotiating?
You're in the middle.
Yeah.
Is there a revenue side of that budget?
There is a revenue side of that budget. Do you wanna wait to do the revenues till the end, or?
I don't know, I just curious.
Yeah.
Yeah, of course.
Wait till the end?
That would impact the next year's budget.
Yeah, okay. Public buildings management, that's primarily just building. What I wanna point out, there's, um, water is down because we are irrigating the town hall property less. Natural gas, our use, that's our heating fuel.
40% increase.
Yeah, our usage went from 38,000 units to 50, 58,000.
Why?
Don't know.
It's cold? Somebody left the window open?
No, it's mild or out.
You would think this year, but like, this is looking at last winter.
Um, you know, I'm not sure how it compares to pre-COVID, but it could be, you know, increased use of the building. We don't know, but that's something we're facing.
That's significant.
Yeah.
So that's something that you're looking to try and determine what the, the cause is?
Yeah, but I'm not sure that we'll be able to, but.
We've been shutting down building even earlier now.
Is it super like inefficient building?
It's what?
It's like a super inefficient building? Okay.
Well, sure.
This is 100 years old.
But it did get much more inefficient in the last 12 months.
That's my point.
Right.
It may have.
Who knows?
Maybe.
An older building.
Maybe.
And it could, it could be just as simple as us running for meetings at night, hours later for the boilers, to keep this place warm, where we used to shut it down, so we're, we're shutting it down again. We're off, and with Fridays off, we're gonna start shutting off the heat too.
Yeah, you would think. Only a four-day work week.
But a lot of people are still here on Friday, still packed. People work on Fridays.
And we still have, yeah, the custodians are still here doing work, and the Mathers Center is still open.
We had a lot of virtual meetings for town meetings at night, house clearers.
What's that?
We had a lot of virtual meetings.
Yeah.
Past clearers. And now we're back in person.
Yeah. But we're seeing utilities up all over the place, and, you know, and as Kira alluded to, we, our actual supply, supplier rate is down, but the delivery rate is up.
Yeah.
On the parking operations over here, this is strictly the town-owned lots. It's just a portion. So you see a portion of the salary for the ranger and, and the other associated costs. We're capturing some of the credit card fees. I actually upped that a little bit based on what I was seeing coming through. We'll go over and talk about parking operations in a minute, so this budget does have revenues. Again, parking, that's the town-owned lots' share of the parking, but...
Can you remind me what the split is on that versus?
Um, there's two different ways of splitting, you know, we, the permits we actually split based on, you know, we know it's Leroy West. The spaces we split on a percentage basis, and it's about, I think it's 28% town and 80, no, 72% state. So refuse disposal permits and the refuse tip fees. That's where you see the increase from what you had approved earlier in the year.
Why did that go through July? Is that when those started?
Um, some things, the permits wouldn't start until July.
When did the increase in the tipping fees go into effect?
They were in October.
October.
But the permit fees.
Right.
But those, that's the smaller part of it. Um, and the other... So this is, um, we moved the grant for Town Aid Road from the capital fund into the general fund. With certain, with state grants over a certain dollar amount, there are some restrictions around it and some conditions around them that were more difficult when we were using it to support the paving operations. So we decided to move it to support our snow removal operations and other administrative functions into the general fund. So that's where you're seeing a big uptick. Uh, and then we transfer money in from the other, from the sewer funds based on the services that the general fund provides on every half. And that's it for revenues, so do you wanna do sewer or parking next?
Up to?
Well, I'm gonna say sewer is, um, I don't want that.
Sewer capital or sewer fund?
Sewer fund. It's pretty status quo. There's, um... I didn't make a lot of, I didn't make any changes to it. It is a self-supporting fund. The sewer operating fees pay for all the expenses. So just staffing here, that would be a step into some general small increases. The big nut here, let's just go look at that one. This is what we pay, um, Stanford to treat our sewage, and that's the bulk of, that's the biggest cost that we have there. Where are we in our contract life with Stanford?
Third year. We have two more, and then there's a five-year extension to it.
I'm gonna move to parking, because that's got more interest. So we are starting to see parking coming back. I check the status in Norton Heights every morning when I come into work. I, you know, drive by and I see how far down the parking lot the cars are.
It's getting fuller, no doubt.
It's getting more full, yeah.
It absolutely is.
Totally.
So, um, we have some administrative costs in here. That's the salary for the parking administrator and some overhead costs, some of Ed's staff, some of the finance department staff, what they do for parking operations is where the bulk of the costs are, the rangers. So this budget does propose bringing back the second ranger. So this was a topic of a lot of discussion for me and Ed and Jen. You can see we, we have pieces and parts of other people, what they do for the parking pump. This is... Right now, we've been operating, well, actually, the last several months, we've been operating with no one, but we are close to filling the parking crew leader spot. But I'm proposing in July to bring back the second parking ranger.
Would this be the same individual, or do you have to train someone?
No, we'd have to bring somebody new in. Because at the time that we actually eliminated that position, we also had a vacancy in the public works department, and that individual moved onto the public works department. So what I wanna point out here is that really, the ability to do that is partly dependent on the fees, and we're seeing the parking permits stabilize, but we really didn't have much drop-off in the permit revenue from the, from the pandemic, but the pay stations is what really dropped off. You see here in the revenue, currently, we're looking at a $280,000 budget. I'm budgeting $375,000 for next year, and that's based on our current usage, but raising the daily fee from $4 to $5. So we will make a proposal to you this summer, but our fees historically for both the annual permit and the, the daily parking are much lower than our neighboring towns. Even, you know, it goes far as Stratford, and their annual permits are about $350. And they're so much further out than ours, and we're only paying, we're only charging 400, so. We should have in 2020 looked at increasing these fees, but because of the pandemic, we didn't, but I think it's time.
So can I suggest we look at the annual as well as the day?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. I think they both need to go up.
Okay.
But I wanted to be frank with you that our ability to bring in that, that second ranger back is dependent on the fee increase, and we really do need the enforcement capability. Our parking ticket revenue is off because we don't have the capacity right now to ticket on a regular basis.
Well, could it be that people are just buying their tickets like they should?
Oh, people are, people are buying.
Right.
But we, we definitely have people who are violating as well.
Parking in the permit lot when they're associated with the data.
Well, you know, right now, we haven't been enforcing the, in the Norton Heights station, we haven't been enforcing that because it's not getting full enough, but we're getting people who don't pay. So, um, we need to, we need to enforce. The, the way to force them to pay is to enforce them.
So, just, just checking the tickets and status of all those vehicles in the sort of the parking lots for the two stations, does it take all day to check all the vehicles in the...
It's not just the train station parking lots, it's also the center street, um, center street and mechanic street.
It's all over town.
Yeah, it's all over town.
And it's only gonna get busier?
It's only gonna get busier.
And they also, they also do things, other things at the, at the train stations, the rangers. They assist with the snow removal and landscaping at the stations and, and maintenance, so.
There've been a few times where there is zero parking downtown, like, there's no lot, there's no street parking, there's not a single spot.
It's not gonna get easier?
No.
Kate, I think when we look at the ranger, we should look at the drop-off in tickets and compare, like, basically, does the ranger write enough tickets to cover the cost, or if not, what percentage?
What percentage of that ticket revenue do we keep? Is it the same as what you mentioned before?
So, um, we keep the, the lease with the state expired over a dozen years ago, but what, we operate under the same lease, and what that requires is that a base percentage of our revenue has to go towards the capital improvements. So, um, in the expense side of this... So you see down here, this $173,000, that's a transfer into the parking capital fund. So we don't have to send the money off to the state.
But you have to use it.
But we have to, we have to give a, keep, put aside a percentage of the revenues for, to maintain the, the station, so.
Do we have any update on what's gonna happen with the Norton Heights renovations?
The, you mean the new station?
Mm-hmm.
Not to my knowledge, um...
Because like, two years ago, it was like 2024, or...
You mean to build a whole new station?
I thought they were gonna start looking at it in 2024.
We, you know, we had a design, but the state was never on board with, with assisting with that, and the cost is millions. I mean, it's like an elementary school.
It's like 24 million, no. Now what about Darien?
That's happening. The, the platforms is happening.
Right. Is it? Okay, that's good.
This winter, they were supposed to stop.
Okay.
Kate, speaking of revenue, so the, should we be successful in renting out the, the train station? Where does that revenue, is it factored in?
It goes, it goes into here.
But we are not factoring it in anyway. It's not budgeted now?
Um, wait, this to come up. I don't recall. It's $4,800 is the estimate.
And it, so you do have it in there? Okay.
What's the status of the new concessions at the train stations?
We're still working on the lease. There's a couple of things that need to be ironed out before we will agree.
Okay.
It's been a process. So just to look at the parking capital. Looking at paving, resurfacing the Tokenique Road parking lot, so that's another area you may not be aware of, but there are spaces on Tokenique Road that does require repaving.
Right by the tracks?
Yeah, yeah.
And is that a state requirement?
It's all over the track.
Well, it's a, it's a state-owned property.
Yeah.
And it's part of our, our agreement is that we have to...
There's a percentage that are related for the train.
We previously put in money for platform shelters at the Darien station. We estimated $100,000. They're coming in at $175,000, so we're asking for another $75,000 of that. And then drainage at the Norton Heights to complete, get that project going and get it completed to do a culvert system underneath the parking lot. I think we need to do it.
I would agree.
And the benefit is that this comes all out of the park, the parking revenues. It's not a taxpayer impacted.
So I know what happens when, after it comes out underneath, it's like, okay.
The other capital. I'm going into the reserve fund capital, or Ed's general capital. It's been a long day for a while, you know, this pretty difficult. Okay, so. Pull up the list.
We got a bridge in there.
There's a bridge in there, and I took it out, and, you know, as I explained earlier, about the things over a million dollars. So. What about the bridge? Talk about the bridge. I put the sweeper in, or I left the sweeper in. That is something I did say to Ed, you know, could we go without, you know? Yes, if we needed to cut it, we could. We would incur some repair costs, but it's reaching the end of its useful life. And we do have to sweep the road, so I put that forward. Tire mount, oops, where am I? I like to use these sheets. The tire mount balancing. This was one that I thought it was going to save us money. ROI of four years. So I felt this was a worthwhile purchase. Paving, I think you know about. The town hall gym upgrades. So this is the, the glass windows. This is the replacement of those. And this is the last piece. No, it's not the last piece. He's shaking his head.
I divided it into four sections because of the use of the facility and what I could have found up there that would have actually required me to shut the gym down for a longer period of time. So I sectioned it off. So we've gotten two, two of the four phases done, the two end pieces.
And two more.
Now it's just the face as you go in towards the small gym windows that are on each side of the center line. So I split it in half again, so that we only have to shut that down two weeks, not, not the month to five weeks that it would require.
Ed, have we seen any cost savings in heat?
Maybe this is our element.
How are we doing on that?
We don't, we don't need the gym.
At all, you don't have to?
Oh, good.
Doesn't heat my office either, so.
And with summer electric too.
Yeah, with some, some are cut down on the layer. We went to a tinted window to cut down on some of the sun and heat that comes through the windows, especially on the south side.
We have $5,000 in there each for a tree replacement. That's an ongoing thing and small capital. Then the next big one is the townwide drainage, $120,000. Three specific repair projects to help prevent flooding. And Hanson and Weston, LNP is?
Lungnick.
Lungnick Point, thank you, sorry. Oh, this is, yeah, this is drainage down that area. Mather Center HVAC upgrades. The AC system needs to be upgraded. And.
Want my help?
Yes, thank you, sorry.
Three separate components are the rear unit behind the Mather Center kitchen. The children used to be replaced. The AC unit over at home in Darien's, about 75K needs to be replaced. And then there's a condensation tank that needs to be removed and replaced, about 10 grand. Total's about $100,000.
And the last one is a small gym roof. That gym roof is leaking. This is, I don't know how familiar you are, but off the gym, there's another little, little room. Roof is old, 30 years old, there's a leak and it does need to be repaired. We do use that, that room, Parks and Rec uses it quite a bit for programs, so. I know there's a lot there.
Just question, a lot of the flood mitigation projects, are they all recommendations from some of the studies that we have done over the last year?
They were actually small ones that really didn't need studies, but that had impacts from flooding. We did go out and do some initial investigation work, whether it was digging or camera work or trying to jet it clean and found that these locations, West and Hanson, those two projects have blockages in them that need to be moved, replaced and the pipe needs to be reinstalled. Lungnick Point is actually missing a pipe. We're gonna make a connection to make that system function better.
Kate, go, go back to the sweeper. So that's a pretty big number. So what, have we been incurring any repair costs?
We did about, I guess about a year and a half ago, too. It was down for about three months for parts and stuff that we couldn't get or they were, when we did get them, they were very, very expensive. But now that it's, it's functioning and we're able to get rid of it and get something for it, it's past its useful life, so the longer I keep it down, the less value I'll have for it. But Kate and I had to discuss it. I said, if it does need to be pushed out another year, we'll do our best to keep it running.
So, so you, you invested in some parts last year. Do you remember how much that was?
It was like 20 something grand.
And does Bri, is Brian able to work on this?
Yeah.
And, and so you're.
I think that one he needs a little bit of help on because of the situation with the pumps and I don't have a pulse at the right now.
Do you have any, any idea on scrapping it, what you would get or reselling it somewhere?
I, I don't, but the auction site we've been using lately, we've been seeing a better return on the equipment after we sell it. So I couldn't give you a number, but I can tell you that we found a better way and hopefully we'll get a better price for it when we do sell it. But I don't have a number to give you right now.
No comps? Nobody else is selling a sweeper?
There it is. Not, not, not any of that run and function for a long period of time.
Okay. I guess we'll talk about this.
We use ours a lot.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what's the frequency of using a sweeper? Obviously after a storm.
During the summertime, we're out every Thursday. We do the downtown.
Oh, you do?
First day, you know, first day of the morning on Thursdays to keep it prepped and ready for the weekend, so it's presentable. And then during the springtime, we're out doing old roads, first month and a half, two months.
Getting rid of the sun.
Cleaning up after the wintertime. It's part of our MS4 program that we do well and sweep the roads and show that we've hit all our roads in town.
And then after a lot of rain, you guys have gone out?
We do, we run out if it's, if the gutter flow has reduced something that needs to be cleaned up.
Yep.
Do you have any thoughts on availability?
Of the sweeper?
Yeah.
Right now, getting any type of equipment or material is a crapshoot. Brian's been pretty good. But you see some of the costs are going up as somebody's using this equipment. I know you folks discussed a fire engine, right? And as blatantly honest as he can be, he's right. These prices just continue to go, go higher and higher and there's, there was no rhyme or reason for it.
But you held off on paving and you saved us some money.
Yeah, well, you can keep my fingers crossed, we'll see what happens in February. But, but liquid asphalt prices did come down substantially, so hopefully there's some savings there.
I think I skipped over a truck.
You did.
Yeah, sorry.
It's okay.
It's looking at the big number.
The Freightliner?
The Freightliner.
Teeny.
Yep, so same deal. It's at the end of its useful life and if we don't replace it, we're gonna have to repair it. So it's a, it's a choice you'll need to make.
Are they available?
I think that's the question with any vehicle, honestly. It's difficult.
I think this one, he's, he's got a decent price on him that we could get something. But just so you know, we have seven of these and I think we've replaced five of them so far. So we're almost at a point where the fleet is where I won't have to be replacing larger trucks for a while.
Ed, was the sweeper in the cap plan? Is it in the replacement plan? The six year, were we?
You mean last year?
Yeah.
I think it was, I think it was the last three or four years. It was in, in the out years.
Okay. Questions I have?
Thank you.
I have some quick ones again. First one is for the purchase of lights continuing to generate planned savings. These are just to be answered.
The purchase of what? Jeff, what was that?
The purchase of lights.
Is it still there?
Oh, okay, yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't hear lights.
So this is all money. Is the increase in town hall after we did the town hall HVAC project? That was put this in the budget the first year of the pandemic. And so I'm assuming we completed. So I'm just curious about that.
The funny thing about the pandemic was with some of the recommendations that came down, they wanted more airflow in these buildings. And we increased the airflow in these buildings with the fans. We had them actually circulating here, a whole lot more than we did before we even changed the system. So it's kind of hard to get a read right now on the usage. But we are starting to scale it back a little bit. I'm trying to save money on electricity, but still provide an environment here that's safe.
Yeah, and just a little side comment with humor. H and B is contributing to savings because we have all of our meetings continuing to be virtual. Too many of our people travel to have a meeting. You know, do we charge a, do we charge a service charge for the parking? But do we do service charges for dump fit stickers for credit card payments? It's gonna be a continuous fee. Have we seen any softness in sewer fund collections? Just, again, don't answer it, we'll get to that later. And, you know, if we know what a daily fee is in the parking lot, is it just simple enough knowing that it's, let's just say $4 a shot, to just have somebody go into the hinterland lots at Nuroton Heights and count the number of cars and see if the number of cars equals the number of fees you got for that day? That would tell you what a potential violation is on a real quick basis.
Well, except that you've got daily parkers and permit parkers in the same lot. We haven't.
Hourly parkers and all-day parkers and just roll over.
Never mind. Do you, just going on something else, do you anticipate any additional funds necessary for the opera funded projects? Some of them I know are not under the rate, but still. And one of the things that was just discovered, discussed is, you know, if, if we know what the red time from ordering to delivery on the sweeper, does that make sense to pull that out of the budget, approve it prior to the budget so that we can certainly order sooner rather than later, especially if the existing sweeper is having to make some gains? Just a thought. We've done that with other vehicles throughout.
Mark, anything?
I got three things. Kate, on the parking, you had a projection on the revenues. Do you have the unit, units that corresponded to past year and prior years? I'm curious of the units of the daily parking. I know they're increasing, but do you know how they compare in pre-pandemic levels? I know you had an increase in the rate.
Yeah, I. I had an increase in the rate factored in. Do I have any, I don't have off, I don't have it here.
No, this, none of this is mentioned now. And then HVAC, if, if the age of the HVAC was on the sheet, I apologize, I missed it.
I think it was the age of the building.
Mather?
It was the age of the building.
Oh, so it wasn't replaced, but we did.
It was not.
Yeah. And then the last thing, Jack, is I want to talk with you about that shifting of the.
The sweeper?
No, upfront, there's that $370,000 going from here to there on the revenue side.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think that's the shifting, so I want to. Yeah, then that's it.
Any other questions for anyone? Okay, just a reminder that tomorrow it's at 7:30, okay?
Seven or 7:30.
Or 7:30, right, Kate?
No, we said seven.
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 I'm sorry, seven, you're right. So, thank you, 79.